Morning, gentlemen. I think we all know why I'm here. Trying to get...
Can you get your name for the record?
Yeah, this is Chris Langston with Coastline Environmental Materials. What I want to talk to you about is the oyster densities that we've currently got in Apalachicola Bay. I know I've heard some comments before talking about Melanie Parker. Our oyster densities, you know, way back when, when we first deposited the material in the culch depositions, there were three types of material that were planted in the bay from here to Pensacola. There was fossilized shell, lime rock, and granite, all placed, of course, and I guess you could say in different columns of water. And fossilized shell, even though the numbers are mediocre at best right now, they still outperform the other materials available on the market. There is one thing about Apalachicola Bay, it does seem to be doing than any other bay along the Gulf Coast. That's not saying much. Now, you know, my ultimate goal is, of course, to get a place up in Tate's Hill State Forest, lease a tract of land from the state of Florida for that purpose in restoration of the habitat. The one thing that I said, I think it was either here or to the city, one point that I did make was a lot of emphasis, a lot of hope, there was a lot of, well, three-quarters of a billion dollars has been spent on the water wars. One thing I do want to point out is, in the last three, going on four years now, our salinity levels have not been an issue. So the predators, conchs, the drills, they have not necessarily been that big of a factor in the last couple of years. Now, our freshwater has come back, but our oyster densities have continued to decline. I can say, I've made the comparison, I've talked to Jonathan Brucker with DEP, who's doing the lime rock and granite culch depositions west of here. And when you compare Melanie Parker, her results to what's coming out, they're having some problems getting out because of weather, but I've talked to Jonathan Brucker, and his anecdotal observations, when I compare the two fossilized shells, still outperforms, even with the lack of freshwater or the influx of freshwater. Now, one thing I want to go from the wet side to the dry side in the mining here locally, one thing that we've got here locally is, quite frankly, job opportunities, and it's stagnant. If you don't work for some form of government here in Franklin County, you pretty much don't work. The oyster harvesting in this area has moved to the Cedar Key area because of the load densities, but I did talk to Scott Pierce of FWC, and there is one thing, there's been over forty or fifty in the last seven months, I believe, of harvest of juvenile oysters and other areas of, I guess you could say, unethical practices that would result in citation or warning. But the main majority of that is, our oyster industry, we're seeing a, quite frankly, history in the making. I mean, you're seeing a way of life at an extinction level event. I mean, it's obvious. I've talked to the aquaculture industry, you know, I've got with the leader in the industry, Jeff Tilly, talked to him about this in detail. He said, you know, he agrees that we've got to restore what we've damaged, we've got to replace what we've taken. And replacing it with lime rock, replacing it with granite, replacing it with a material that's non-indigenous to Apalachicola Bay, has been proven not to work. Now, I can say, we all know that green shell, processed shell, is arguably probably the best, but I can say with fossilized shell, your density's higher, and, you know, you've got a 360 circumference, but I'm going to leave the biology of that to Joe Shields. But I'm going to get on to the dry side, and I want to talk about the impacts of the I might have if we were to be able to get the mining site. Now, as you can see in some of the information I gave you, you can see an aerial view of the size of the mine that I used to own and operate. It was currently known as, and it was just brought up as Langwood Industries throughout the history of Langwood Industries, there were zero complaints, there was zero negative impacts outside the footprint of that mine. Any impacts to any wetlands were within the impact or within the footprint that was permitted to be removed. Now, I know that somebody brought up the muddying of a well. Well, the nearest homestead to that site location is over five miles away. So what I'm saying is, is it's impossible for a well over five miles away to be affected by that mining process. Now, one other thing, the site that I have chosen, I also know that it was brought up earlier about the ARC Committee, or Council, Acquisition Restoration Council, over state lands. There is one thing that is about this piece of property, on the south boundary line, there is a wide grade road, and if you'll go back to the creation of Tate's Hill State Forest, which my father had a part in playing in getting it written up, you've got rock land and road and 22, all the way, I believe it's Crooked River, that are dedicated to mining practices. Meaning, in the purchase and creation of Tate's Hill State Forest, mining at some point in time in the future was expected. Now, to the eastern boundary of this piece of property, you've got Highway 67. So any real impact to any of the adjacent wetlands has already been done through the creation of the main road right there dedicated to the mining practices, as well as Highway 67. This deposit is 65 feet deep, as you can see by the test scores, it's very high in calcium carbonate, which is also a foundation builder for that oyster spat. And it's a material that can be provided for many different purposes, whether it's for restoration of the bay, whether it's to offset some of the maintenance cost of Tate's Hill State Forest, or, you know, this material is unique, but it can go to many different ways, including help take some of the existing businesses here and accommodate them with a material whereas they're driving over 100 miles one way, depending upon where you are in Franklin County to get the cabbage growth, so it'd be a local source of material that would provide probably 20-plus jobs, boots on the ground at the mine. And if we get into a shelling program, whether it's bought or whether it's donated, you put 300-plus seamen or watermen, waterwomen, back to work through that process. So we've got the capabilities through coordination, and remember, I'm here for nothing more than a letter of support today. I'm not asking for the county to assume any liability, I'm not asking the county to make any capital investment whatsoever. My partners and I are willing to take it from day one to the end, pay for the permitting, go through all of that process, put $2 million-plus dollars' worth of equipment in, pay the labor. My point is, we can be one of the largest private employers in the area, and at the same time, restoring our bay. Now, there is one thing I would like to point out, my proposal here is not a contract, it is simply an outline of what my method of thinking is. I do want to point out that in my materials plan and objective, it points out that I had a deal worked out with Mayor Van Johnson to utilize Battery Park. That has not come to fruition yet. They currently are trying to take their Battery Park, get it rezoned to allow barging, right now it's not even zoned correctly, so they're trying to get that worked out. I do want to make that point, but I've got a deal worked out, one in St. Mark's, one in Gulf County. The one in Gulf County, I've got a verbal with their harbor master, Jim Townsend, who is the barge captain. The one in St. Mark's, I'm working on a lease deal. So the use of Battery Park, I'd like to utilize that, because that would bring, you know, right now, we haven't decided on a money amount yet, but it's no secret as to where, you know, the city of St. Mark's is financially, or, excuse me, city of Appalachia is financially. And, you know, by utilizing their barge site, working this thing out, because I know they've got licensing, you know, the ABHOL, and the authority there such, I would like to try to work this, that's why I'm going with the city, is because I'm trying to give them the tools necessary, as well as generate some revenue, so they can stand alone and not be totally dependent on the state. It's something that they can do on their own. Now, are we there yet? No. It's something that Ron Alley and the board and I are still going to have to have future talks about, but one thing I can say is, that I do have a letter of support out of the city of Appalachia for this mining proposal. Now, I'm asking for you today, I've got a couple of example letters in there, if you want to write it differently, you know, however you want to do it, but my point of today is, if I could, but before I do, excuse me, I'm getting ahead of myself, before I do, I'd like somebody to stand up here and talk to you about the benefits the bay can see by utilizing this material. It's a man that's been on the bay, Apalachicola Bay, he's got over 10 years' experience in this bay with oyster habitat, former, you know, former employee and director of Division of Aquaculture. I'm going to turn you over to Joe Shields right now, thank you.
As Mr. Langston said...
Let me get your name.
Yeah, I was getting that. My name is Joe Shields. I am currently a consultant for Mr. Langston, but prior to that, was an administrator over marine resource restoration and development for the state of Florida. My team and I planted oyster reef substrate from Pensacola down to Cedar Key as part of the state's ongoing 50 years' worth of trying to reestablish oyster reefs that had been, you know, over time degraded. The basic reason why I was asked to speak is because of all the material used by the state of Florida in over 50 years of doing this activity, fossilized shell works the best. Apalachicola Bay has had, as far back as the early 20s, the early 30s, obviously, processed shell coming from the processing plants here in Franklin County were used almost 100% of the time following Hurricanes Kate and Elena, some of you may recall, 1985, massive mortality, 100% die-off in Apalachicola Bay following those two storms. The state contracted with a couple groups out of Louisiana, and they brought over scallop shells and utilized that for culch activities. In the early 90s, that's when the state started experimenting with fossilized shell. As the number or amount or volume of processed shell started to fall off, obviously, the state wanted to continue doing this, as it is an important aspect for oyster habitat restoration, we switched to fossilized shell. Actually, started using it in Apalachicola Bay almost exclusively in, I want to say, 2009. So for 10 years, the state of Florida used fossilized shell not only in Apalachicola Bay, but in St. Andrews Bay, as well as Pensacola Bay. So the material itself is not in question, in my opinion. It is, the problems that we are seeing in Apalachicola Bay from an ecosystem standpoint stem from, as Mr. Langston pointed out, the lack of fresh water. But droughts and wet years, as we say, are cyclical. You can go back and look at the data that the Department of Health, the Department of Natural Resources, the Department of Environmental Protection, and then subsequently the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services has collected over time. There was a point in the early 1900s when the entire western half of Apalachicola Bay died and came back. There's been hurricanes, there's been freshwater, the complete opposite, where in 1995, the Apalachicola Bay River shot up to 31 feet and stayed there for four or five weeks. That water came out, killed everything on East Hole. East Hole came back. Everything is cyclical, and so what we're looking at in this scenario right now is that Mother Nature is not, she's not letting us do what we need to do, in the sense that we have, we have the opportunity now, because we've had wet years, that, as Mr. Langston pointed out, predation is down, salinity levels are down, this is the ideal time to be culching, to be restoring the 4,000 acres of oyster reefs here in Apalachicola Bay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And there's one more question, there's one more point I'd like to make to that. 4,000 acres of oyster habitat is all Apalachicola Bay's got. I'm looking at about 400 acres out of a 202,000 acre footprint in just Tate's Hill State Forest, another 685,000 acres of land that adjoin Tate's Hill, so you're looking almost a million acres between the Apalachicola National Forest and the Tate's Hill State Forest. So I'm sure that the little critters that live on this little piece of land can find refuge on the adjacent property. The organism I'm talking about in Apalachicola Bay cannot. Now, the one thing that I want everybody to understand is, inside the footprint of this mine, are we going to dig it up? Yes, we are. But we're doing it to restore state lands. Right now, this proposal, I haven't seen it battling on the market, but understand, we're not buying this land. We're, you know, we're not taking over this property. This property, at the end of this property, will be a deep-water lake, it will have a hardened boat ramp, and it will have a campsite. Now, of course, that's probably further off in the distance than any of us will be allowed, but this is future generations. And one thing that I can point out by getting this letter of support, it's going to help me up the chain of command, but ultimately, I do get this, this is one facet of a multi-facet problem. This is one point that the Apalachicola Bay will not have to worry about in the future ever again, and that is having suitable culch material to restore Apalachicola Bay's oyster harvest. Now, when you take the pros and you weigh them against the cons, it's lopsided. The pros far outweigh the cons. That Apalachicola Bay, at one time, was this area's largest employer. I'd like to see it come back to that. Like I said, I grew up in Franklin County, I grew up on St. George Island, my summer months when I was out of school, I was in the plantation fishing at Bob's Sights Cut. I remember what the fishing was back 30, 40 years ago. You couldn't put a piece of shrimp, cut bait, or a jig out there without getting a strike about every second cast. Now you're lucky to fish all day and catch three fish. So I want to take one more point to make. Everybody has a concern about fossilized shell and its ability to perform. I ask you to look north, look in Chesapeake Bay. Chesapeake Bay is probably 10 times the size of Apalachicola Bay, but they have utilized processed shell and fossilized shell only. They've tried many other different materials, but they started buying several hundred thousands of tons of fossilized shell, and right now, their blue crab numbers are the highest they've been in the last 12 years. And what I'm pointing out with that is, with a flourishing oyster habitat, your bycatch, you know, or byproduct, is your marine fisheries. All of, you know, the number-one attraction to this area is your sports fishing, other than the white sand beaches on St. George Island. But when the oyster habitat goes, so does everything else. Like I've said, when you've got a flourishing oyster habitat, you've got a flourishing bay. When you've got a struggling oyster habitat, well, you've got what you've got now. And I would ask for your support today, and like I said, it's a letter of support, I'm not asking for you to assume any liability, and I'm not asking for a dime of support, just your verbal support. And I'll leave it at that.
Plays of the board, any discussion on you?
Mr. Chairman, I commend Mr. Langston in the research he's done, the data he has. I've been out doing a field trip with him, touched fossilized shell for the first time in my life to see the density and just how it feels. This is a pristine area of our national forest, our state forest, rather, and I'd like to have a conversation among us about engaging the state of Florida in this thought process. What do they think about this project, and how it would impact the decision about whether they, that land, and what the appropriate use of that land is, or is there any consequences at all? Is there excellent studies here? And I'd like to engage the state of Florida, not only to give an opinion about this project, but I'd like to have evidence base about what their opinion is supported by. And I think it'd be appropriate to just simply table the quality of this request and seek the advice of the state of Florida, and then let's deliberate over that point.
Can I make another comment? We do understand that before I stick a bucket in the ground, DEP, Corps of Engineers, and actually, the Franklin County Board will all have an opportunity to have public comment, but we're not even to the level yet to where we could even involve the state. I mean, that's what I'm trying to get to now, but understand that before a permit is issued, okay, reclamation, you know, your damage assessment, the value of the wetlands, both inside and outside the footprint, all of that comes under great scrutiny. And quite frankly, a letter of support signed yes or no, I mean, of course, yes, it allows me, because as you know well, as well as I do, Gulf Triumph, the state, everybody, they want to see local support. This letter right now, accompanied with the letter from the city of Appalachia, just gives me that ability to take that next step. And with that next step, it doesn't mean there won't be future conversations. This is in your district.
I understand.
There will be plenty of future conversations, but what this does is, it allows me to go to the next step, and that's it. Like I said, it doesn't assume any liability. And one thing I do want to point out now, you've got Highway 67 on one side, you've got a main grade road on your south side that's dedicated to mining practices, and then you've got private property to your west boundary. So, I mean, the pristiness of this property, I guarantee you, I've had the support of Dog Hunters Association, they're the main user group of this area, and I've talked to, oh God, the number's probably staggering, but I can say, this one particular piece of property, I'll bet you there's not a footstep on it 363 days out of the year.
Understood.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of order, if I may. Mr. Langston's had his opportunity to make the presentation, I think the chairman's already called for discussion among the board members at this point, so I think it's appropriate, as y'all see fit, to have a conversation among yourselves at this point. It's point of procedure.
Excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, I've got something, just a question.
As I understand it, in the state currently, Michael, if you can help me with this, in the state currently rewriting their Tate's Hill management plan?
Yes, I think they might have one more public hearing left, and then it goes to the governor for signature, and that probably will be done towards the end of, the last quarter of the year, let me just say that.
Okay, wouldn't that plan directly speak to what we're looking at supporting?
Yes.
Or, you know what I mean?
Yes, I actually attached the, it's expired now, but the last plan that they had in place is part of your agenda package, yes.
I thought that's what I remember reading through. I just, I'm not trying to mess anybody up or delay anybody from trying to produce business, I'm not. But I don't, again, with the discussion we had earlier about the traffic lights and working with the state, I don't think we need to start approving something or stamping something that the state themselves might have a problem with, and they're the ones writing up the plan, not us, and that has its own public comment and its own things allowed. That's just me, but that's where I stand.
Anybody else got something to say?
Well, it's like this with me, a letter ain't gonna hurt, we not gonna make the final decision. Final decision gonna be made with the state of Florida. They the one who, they the one who owe the proof, the land belonged to them. And really, it don't with the state. I don't see where a letter gonna hurt, help, or nothing there, because they gonna do what they do. So I don't see where it'll hurt to write a letter.
I think we're stewards of the state's land in some ways, and I think that we really need to look at their thought process and get up to date on what their thought processes are with regard to this entire pristine area to underscore the quality of our decision-making. I think we just need to stand by and have a look at that report from the state, and I think get counsel from the state about what they intended was the reason they purchased that land in the first place relative to our entire ecosystem.
I don't see how that possible, because they had mining on them before.
Yeah.
So I don't see what they intend, if they was so much intent not to have, they shouldn't have done it in the beginning, that's the way I see it.
We have new science today, so we didn't back in that old mine day.
I'm gonna make a motion that we table this until after the state gets through with their management.
A second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Perry, seconded by Commissioner Burt. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I've got something. I just want to make a request, if we are going to table it, that we, as soon as the state weighs in on their new plan, that we get ready to readdress this issue.
Yeah. Allow me and my motion to reflect Commissioner's comment.
I would second that amendment.
Okay, the motion then first, and second, and they amended it, to wait till the state get through with their plan, and then you revisit it. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I oppose. I go pull them on.
So the quality of that motion, of that vote here was that we're putting monitoring on this, we're not going to let this sit and spin, but we're going to watch and carefully monitor when the state comes up with their new opinion on Tate's Hill and what to do about that.
So is what this motion, can I get some clarification?
That's what I'm fixing to give you. Commissioner Boat, what I was asking for was just that, when they do weigh in, that that's something that'll be coming up on the agenda so we can take care of this business.
Automatically, yeah.
Automatically, it's not going to be a delay to get on the agenda.
That's right, no delay.
To take care of.
Okay, so at the end of the acquisition, ARC Council meeting is coming up in October, that's going to be the new management... That's gonna be the new management plan, so when that new management plan comes out, then I'll immediately be able to get back on the agenda to address this again. All right, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Point of clarification, when it's adopted by the Board of Trustees, not when the plan's done, but when it's actually adopted by the Board of Trustees, that's different than what he stated in October, because this is not gonna be adopted by the Board of Trustees by October.
Yeah, I mean, but, but the Art Committee will be able to vote on it in October, so it's what we're saying.
We're not talking about anything about the Arts Committee. You, you heard what I just stated, right?
Well, no, I didn't, that's the reason I'm back up here.
When the, when they adopt their policy, which has to be adopted by the Board of Trustees, at that point, then we will readdress, readdress this issue.
Okay, that's what I needed, thank you.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Marcy Johnson, clerk of the court.
I don't have a report, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Next on the agenda will be Mr., who do, you gonna do, Allen?
Agent Allen's item was the one, the only item he had is referring to the delay of the opening of the RFQ's alligator drive, so he doesn't have, there are no more items in his report.
Okay. Next on the agenda will be Mr. Michael Malone, the county coordinator.
Okay, I'm trying to remember which ones we haven't addressed thus far. If we could, we'll start with item two. Mr. Kurington has received and reviewed the local agency program agreement for County Road 67, also known as Tallahassee Street Sidewalk Construction Project from Avenue A to Crooked Creek Road. Estimated cost of this project is $491, $563, $591,000, $563, and should be completed on or before June 30th, 2020. The next step is to create bid and other required documents for FDOT's approval. Once the approval, then we start the bid process. Board action to authorize the chairman's signature and the lab agreement and the resolution.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Marcy, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I pass it now.
Commissioner Parrish, you're right, I should've brought up three with Vonda here.
Right.
You did say that, and it's my mistake. At your July 16 meeting, the board authorized preliminary approval, allowing Mike and Pat O'Connell of Saint George Island Civic Club to create a plan and draft a grant application for an FDOT-funded beautification grant for state-owned land between Bryant Patent Bridge exit to Bayshore Drive on Saint George Island. Civic Club has completed the grant application packet that includes the final design, final estimates of cost to install and maintain, letters of support, and the application form. This information is due to FDOT this Thursday, August 22nd. Board approval authorizing the chairman's signature on two resolution is requested. The first resolution authorizes the Civic Club to prepare the grant application, and the second is the county's authorization of the grant application and commitment to maintain landscaping as required by the grant. Mr. Kurington, county planner, is reviewing the grant application packet. So if you make a, if the board makes a motion to approve, I would ask it as a contingent on Mark's approval, and I'm not sure if the county attorney wants to see the two resolutions before we sign. That could be contingent of both if that's.
Did you have a deadline on Thursday as well?
Of Thursday?
Yeah.
Yes, I realized, I just, something we can do. Mark started to review the packets yesterday, so I wasn't sure where he would be this morning, so that's why I didn't say to the affirmative that he did review them already.
Mr. Chairman, just for the board's clarification, typically, the way these grants work with the state, Mr. Kurington and myself, is if we want their money, we sign their paperwork. I don't really think there's any need for me to look at any of the documents.
I just wanna make sure that.
They're not gonna let us change it anyway.
Yeah, because the commitment is a commitment, landscaping, correct?
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Marcy. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I pass it.
Oh, we did four, five, six. Let's skip to item number seven. The board is aware Ms. Lisa Lance resigns her position as library director effective June 7th. As of today, there is no candidate for this position, and a new advertisement to fill the position won't start until after the final budget public hearing on October 17th, when the board approves the county's budget. If you consider advertising, interviewing, selection, and notification, the earliest start date for a new director won't be until the last week in November or the first week in December. It's a long time ago without some type of supervision of both branches, and my current schedule doesn't allow for weekly visit to the East Point and Caribou Branches. However, I am working with, with Aaron Griffith and Ms. Pat Gillian of the Wilderness Coast Public Libraries on library administrative responsibilities, such as the fiscal year 2019, 2020 State Aid to Libraries grant. They got a play-away launch grant for tablets, I'm working on the order for that, and some other items. I'm asking the board to consider authorizing Ms. Kate Aguilar, she's the Library Advisory Board chairperson, and Ms. Pam Tillis, Friends of the Library, to act as site supervisors for both branches. Since they frequently visit your libraries, they could work out, work with the library staff on day-to-day issues, with the understanding that I will be informed and have the final say on all issues. So basically, things are coming up, Commissioners, like a staff member needs to take a day off, so we have to figure out coverage. There are different little things that they deal with that Commissioners, you know, it's just sometimes they just sit there, because I just don't have the time to address them. So if they can handle the little things and keep me informed, and then when it comes to their bigger issues, you know, then I, I'll get involved, I'll make the decisions.
Indeed, none of them work, is correct.
Yes, sir. Be aware, these are not county employees. Both of them serves on two different boards that assist the library, so I need to be very crystal clear about that.
Mr. Chairman, Michael, how did Ms. Aguilar and Ms. Tillis feel about this possibility?
I talked to them, but they are in favor, they have no problem with that, they think it'll probably help the situation, so.
Pleasure to both.
I say move on your action.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Burke.
I second it with some discussion, Mr. Chairman.
I got it seconded by Commissioner Jones, discussion.
Yep, and now this would just be until a new director is hired?
Yes, sooner the better.
Okay.
All right, any more discussion? Well, we still didn't come up with a price yet, did we?
No, sir. Yep.
How we gonna advertise and don't know a price and all that?
Exactly, your last action, if I'm wrong, correct me, was that you, that I, not, because you guys would agree to it at the final.
Budget hearings.
Budget hearing, which is on October 17th, starts at 5:15.
September.
Yeah, September 3rd, isn't it?
Yeah, September.
Why am I saying October? Sorry.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
All opposed? I'm gonna oppose the two, three to two. Next, oh, go ahead. Pass it.
Okay. Item number eight, remind the board that your FAC 2019 Innovation and Policy Conference is scheduled for Wednesday, September 25th, and Thursday, September 26th, at the Sheridan Panama City Beach Golf and Spa Resort in Bay County. FAC encourages attendance for an on-the-ground look at disaster response and recovery to get a clear picture of just what happened in the aftermath of October 10th, 2018. If you're planning on attending, I suggest you contact Ms. Cruz on that Cheyenne, or let me know, let me know as soon as possible, so I can make arrangements. I know it's a drive away, but we still need to register you for the conference. Now, there also, what happens, you know, consortium, you guys have to realize, there are other little meetings that go on there once everybody gathers, consortium, Commissioner Parrish, you can look for that schedule, you're an executive board, and I don't know what other meetings are there that you guys may serve on. So it's not just about the conference, it's all the meetings that go along with the conference.
Do we need to make a motion authorizing travel, Mike?
Travel expenses.
I'll make that motion, any Commissioners want to attend this, as Mike has reflected, I attended a consortium meeting, and Commissioner Jones is part of the executive board, so I'm sure he'll be attending what days and all that, I'm not sure yet, but I'm gonna make that motion for any Commissioners who wants to go have the travel paid.
Okay.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Marcy. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass it.
Michael, what value can we bring to the county commission by attending this event?
Actually, Commissioner, it'd be better if I just send you the agenda and you look at some of the speakers, but especially with this, talking about the recovery, basically what went wrong, what went right, how they could improve, and how we could benefit from some of that information, is probably what you're looking at. So it's only two days, so it won't be that many speakers, especially with all these other meetings going on. But I will send you the agenda, sir. And which will include the speakers and, you know, what else is going on. They usually have a couple of round tables, you know, that type of stuff.
Is this an annual event? You guys have gone before and found value in it?
Every year?
Yes.
Every year, and sometime they have classes?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know if any set up in Nippon or not.
Yeah, I didn't, there's anything about ethics classes on this deal, so.
I ain't talking about the edge that they have on.
Other classes?
Oh.
Part of your study, part of your coursework for.
Oh, for your certification?
For certification for new commissioners.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner, we'll, we'll get together on the agenda and I'll kind of pick out what, you know, what you think. If I may, item number nine, inform the board that your new permit specialist, Ms. Courtney Bankson, started yesterday, feel free to stop by and meet Ms. Bankson. Also, Mr. Gary Millender, your building official, and Amy Hamm Kelly, your zoning administrator, conducted building inspector interviews last week. After interviewing all four candidates that applied, Mr. Millender and Mrs. Kelly selected Robert Steve Patterson as the county's building inspector. Mr. Patterson is in the process of completing the necessary paperwork and scheduling the required drug test. He should be starting sometime during the end of the month.
Where he from?
He is, is, is it Heats? I think it's Heats brother-in-law.
He used to live right out here, oh, right behind where the Y is at, Napa? I'm not sure where he lives anymore.
Yeah, but I think he's Gallois.
Brother-in-law.
Brother-in-law, he worked with him for quite a while in his construction company.
Oh, yeah, I know he.
Yeah.
Okay.
We did 10, and 11. Inform the board that I received complaints from staff, from attendees, from other Planning and Zoning Commission members regarding the conduct of a Planning and Zoning Commission member at the August 13 P&amp;Z meeting. I will have a discussion with that member regarding their conduct at that meeting. Depending on the outcome of that conversation, I may ask this board to remove that member from the Planning and Zoning Commission at your next meeting, which is your September 3 regular meeting. There's still, there's too many complaints. About what?
Are you gonna get with each Commissioner and tell them all the complaints?
I will, individually, what the complaints are, what it was, but I just wanted the board to be aware that I'm having this conversation with one of your Planning and Zoning members.
Don't put it out in public, have a call each one.
Yes, and some of you, you might have gotten complaints yourself about that, so I just want to be very clear, that's what my plans are.
Yeah.
And Commissioners, I don't have any more notes, so I think I've done enough damage for the day.
Yes, sir.
Well, why are you here? Why are you, Ms. Nguyen, would you come to the podium? We introducing, this'll be my new member to the hospital board, Ms. Murders Nguyen, and I want you to get up paperwork and everything and.
Well, Ms. Murders, how you doing today?
Oh, I'm fine, how you doing? Thank you.
She told me she was, you willing to accept her, right?
Yes, I am.
Welcome to the board.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you for serving.
Thank you for serving.
We appreciate that.
Nguyen. I'm sorry.
That's great, appreciate you doing that.
Ms. Murders, I have formally, this board formally do it as a September 3 meeting, okay? I just, I need to sit with her, and we have to have a little meeting and see where we are. Not as bad as my number 11 meeting, but.
I tell you what, it's, it's good to get people to say it on board.
Yep.
It's hard.
So, Madam Clerk, let me remind them that September, September 3rd and September 17th are your budget public hearing, public hearings, right here at 5:15. Got that right? So, your next, your meetings in September, so remember, put in your calendar, you have, have evening meetings, 5:15, right here.
Next, so, Mr. Mike Schuler, oh, you do, Mike?
Yes, sir. Unless, you guys have nothing else for me? Commissioner Marcy said I did enough damage.
He did? Next, go ahead, Mr. Schuler.
Mr. Chairman, I only have one action item on the report that I submitted, and that is authorize the chairman's signature on the settlement that you had authorized me to enter into at the last meeting with Mr. Gill's lawsuit concerning the ADA website accessibility. You had authorized up to $8,000 in the adoption of a, an accessibility policy. We ultimately agreed on a settlement of $500 and the adoption of accessibility policy.
Way to go. So, move.
What a relief.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish. You second?
Yep, that's right.
Second by Commissioner Jones. What'd that money come out of? Professional services?
We'll have to check with finance, probably professional services would be my guess. Basically, we're reimbursing them for their filing fee in federal courts, what it comes down to. Just by comparison, Walcollo County paid them 13,000 or 15,000 dollars.
Really?
And then, just to close.
We got, we got, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I pass it.
And just to complete the record on the settlement with the Hiltons that the board has previously approved many, many, many months ago, I'd say over a year ago, we finally got the settlement checks in last week, and those have been delivered to the Hiltons, and the settlement agreement has been signed by the Hiltons, so that completes everything other than having the chairman sign the settlement documents that you previously approved it, there's no need for you to take any action today, I just want there to be some record that we have finally gotten the checks and resolved this matter. And they do not include any county equitable funds, they all came from private sources. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so that concludes my report, unless there are any questions for me from the board.
Good job on, Mr. Chairman, good, good job on that one settlement. Quite substantially less than what we allocated, so.
Sure is.
We appreciate your work on behalf of the county.
Yes, sir, thank you.
They hit several people, didn't they?
Yes, sir.
All over the county, all over the state.
Oh, hundreds, the, the ADA lawsuit, literally, I think there are hundreds, I personally think that law firm, there's two of them, they're very small law firms, and they, they have figured out they have a tiger by the tail, they're, they're overwhelmed with, with the workload, and I think they're just frankly looking to get rid of it, so.
Anybody else got anything for Mr. Schuler? Commissioner coming. Commissioner's coming, I got one, on the hospital deal. Need a motion. Look here. They going around, we going, talking about, all that money is hospital, that penny is hospital money. And some kind of way, they talking about, they sound owe that, 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 it don't owe nothing. And we need to straighten this stuff up. You ain't, they ain't spent nothing outside the hospital. Why do they owe money? We gave them 100% one time. Why, why do they talking about, they need money to pay back to the trust, well, how are you gonna pay it back? We need to clear that up so that can come off the books. People jump up here all the time, they owe 18 million dollars and all that, they owe no 18 million dollars, you, you use that money from hospital, a penny, you use it in the hospital, ain't like you went in the Avalon tax and got some money. You use a penny from the hospital. We need to straighten that out. I'd like to see a motion so we can get that straight.
Madam Clerk, I think what, what the chairman is referring to is that money that we had, they called it a loan that was used from the capital side, sent to operations, and I think what he's trying to find out, what is the process to, to, not recorded it.
I understand, you know, and the county at the time did call it a loan, but if you, and I think Aaron brought this up sometime in the last few months, if the county wanted, I mean, it's still running on the books, but if you made a motion, you know, that you, you don't want that to be as a loan, and we can, you know, the auditor said we can change what our books say. But when it was, the money was given to the hospital, it was, the motion was it was a loan. But you, you have the right to change whatever you want to change, language.
We ain't got no bylaw saying that we give, where it pulled the money along. There's no, nothing in the, in the policy.
That was just the motion, Chairman, it was just the way the motion was done that day by the board, but you have the authority to change your motion. day by the board, but you have the authority to change your motion. And I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't affect me or my office, Aaron has to run it unless you change something. As a law.
I'd like to see it changed, myself, 'cause I don't, the, the money going to the hospital, whether you use it in one capacity or not, it's not like you borrowing no money to, to do this. What you gonna do, sit there and let it stay in the hospital, in, in the, in the phone, let the hospital close?
I, I think that we run it on our books like a due from.
Yeah, one, one, due to and due from, yes, ma'am.
But we can, you know, that can be changed at, you know, your discretion, your vote.
Okay. Any more, just.
Just a few thoughts, do you want to give us a proposed motion wording that we could look at in the next meeting to see if we could clear this up?
We, I mean, I, we'll be, Aaron should be back next, she had a family emergency.
Surely, okay.
But I'll be glad to get with her on the exact line.
Can look at that number and see if we can, okay. And I just would like to comment, I think we've had another defining moment here in the county today about how we are resetting the button for our health care look at, looking at more, an integrated approach, and I think it's a very happy and optimistic day coming here in Franklin County as we go forward and give now new words to the people about our health care systems.
Any more public, I mean, any more commission to come in? Meet the door.
Thank you.
Lunchtime.